...budgets, they're asked to step to the podium at this time. Anyone? Anyone? Okay. If there are no speakers, I'll ask one more time, is there anyone who would like to speak? Then, the public hearing is closed at 7:19 PM. Thank you. And we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Tracy?
Oh, I move that the Board of Education approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Portrapi?
Yes.
Mr. Rikis?
Yes.
Ms. Chow? Yes. So moved. Now, I think we have a special student recognition?
Yes, yes, we do indeed, and it's always such a great pleasure. As part of our regular board meetings, we take the opportunity to recognize our students and staff members for their accomplishments and the wonderful things that are happening in our schools. I have the great honor to take this opportunity to recognize one of our students, Ian Sims. Ian is currently a sixth grader at Shute Middle School. Ian plays football for the North Shore Panthers and was recently named a Pop Warner Academic All-American. As a result of his hard work in school and his grades that he has earned, Ian is in the top 2% academically of more than 350,000 children across the country who participate in the Pop Warner program. Top 2% of 350,000 students, student athletes. Not only that, Ian is the first Evanstonian to be honored this way in the 40-plus year history of the program. He was recognized this summer at a national event at Disney World, and I'm very proud of Ian for being named an Academic All-American, and most importantly, for your incredible work ethic both on and off the field. On behalf of the entire district, I want to congratulate Ian for a job well done. I also know that today's a special day because today's Ian's birthday. So please join me in congratulating Ian for hard work and a very happy birthday, and we have a little gift for you, and if we may, we'd like to take a picture.
Yeah. Wow.
Congratulations. You give the best smile this chance.
Congratulations on your birthday. I've never been next to an All-American. Thank you. Hope this sounded good. That's very exciting. So next, we have our formal presentations from the public, but I don't believe anyone has signed up for presentation. Okay. So we'll move past that, and if there are any speakers in the audience that want to speak at the informal presentation portion at the end of the evening, they can do so. Our superintendent, board, and district communications. Oh. Hi, everyone. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Congratulations. I will start just with a brief comment related to our progress on negotiations with our teacher educators and the District Education Council. Recently, both parties have agreed to request a federal mediator, and my sincere hope is that involvement of a mediator will help both sides to make progress toward a fair contract for all. As many of you know, this is a really pivotal time for our school district on many fronts. There's so much promise in the work we're doing and the work that lies ahead for our students, and yet, we can't overlook some very significant financial challenges. The time is upon all of us to share responsibility in addressing these challenges so that we can both maintain the quality of education here in Evanston and Skokie and provide job stability for our valued professionals. So we'll be looking to do that as we move forward with the involvement of our mediator. Paul, did you have any other comments that you wanted to make, or anyone else on the board?
I do. I have a few things to share. I also want to take a moment and congratulate Elizabeth Westfall, who's a drama teacher at Nichols, on receiving the 2015 Award of Excellence from the Illinois Theater Association. This award is part of the creative drama category. She was recognized for her significant contribution to our District 65 students in promoting quality theater throughout the state of Illinois. We look forward to recognizing Elizabeth and her terrific accomplishment with our District 65 community. This week, actually, we're very excited, the district will be kicking off our fall workshop series for District 65 families. These workshops are a direct result of what we heard during our community conversation series this past spring. We received a great response and have over 50 families signed up to participate in our first sessions of Parents as Educational Partners, or PEP, P-E-P, PEP within English as Second Language Focus and U.S. Citizenship classes. These workshops are free and open to all of our District 65 families. I want to give a special shout-out to Eze Nunez, our Family and Community Engagement Coordinator, and to our outreach staff, Kathy Graves, Ellen Yergiaga, and bilingual parent liaison Manuel Aleman for hosting these workshops and connecting with our families. And again, these workshops are Parents as Educational Partners, the PEP program is English with a Second Language Focus and U.S. Citizenship classes, and we're really looking forward to hearing more news from that program. I had a wonderful opportunity over the weekend to go to three events. I went to the Lincolnwood Fall Festival, and I went to the Washington Fall Festival, really spectacular fall days where families and kids were out. But I want to really tip my hat to our teachers and our staff and our administrators who were working well onto a Saturday to engage in the community festivities and celebrations at both of those schools. I also got an opportunity to go to the Day J Coleman Foundation celebration that happened Friday night, and then I was in attendance on Saturday, where it was Literacy Day on Saturday. Free books were being given out, there was absolutely powerful spoken word provided by several high school students, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to celebrate literacy, to celebrate the voice of students in the community, and to remember and celebrate Day J Coleman, who was taken from us way too soon. If I may, I know we have an equity update, and I just thought I would jump right in on that. We have a lot of things going on in the district right now. We have a seed class, Seeking Educational Equity and Diversity class, going on with over 60 participants of district players, and we had our first two classes last week. We convened the district education leadership team that dealt last week as well, and had over 20 players, teachers and administrators, senior officers with me and myself, talking about the equity impact statement that we had talked about at the board the week before. As we speak, we have a team at the Pacific Education Group, the PEG Group's National Summit in Austin, Texas. We have three central office officials, two principals, a board member, and a teacher who are part of the District 65 team that are participating now, and several of us have participated in more regional summits of the PEG Group earlier. So we are well underway, and we started last week the equity walks in, I think, one or two of our schools, and those will be continuing as we go through the fall. So we're very actively pursuing the agenda as promised.
Great.
I had one other question. There's another one that was listed in the minutes that was RCD. I'm just trying to find that place in the minutes where it is. Is it another?
Is that the Race Forward group, or is that? No.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure.
It could be the Race Forward. They have another name, but I don't know.
Yeah, I guess my recommendation would be that in minutes, we don't use acronyms.
So registered.
So we're trying to figure out something about what we're doing. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, thank you, and we'll follow through on what the RCD is.
Did any other, anyone else have comments? I did neglect to say just a quick snippet about our board vacancy, just again to remind folks that we are in the process of accepting resumes and applications for our board vacancies since Jennifer Phillips had resigned from the board last month. The deadline is this Friday, the 29th, at 5:00 PM, I believe, and so I would encourage anyone that's thinking about board service to take a look on our website where the information is located in terms of the application and the process for submitting, and we would love to have as many of you out there get involved with board service as possible. I think that's it? Okay.
I did find the other acronym, it's ASCD?
ASCD is the--
American Society of Curriculum Development.
It's what?
It's American Society of Curriculum Development.
Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development.
ASCD is a professional development organization based in DC, and that one had Pedro Noguera, who has written a lot of work on equity, and his latest book was brought to our attention by several members of the community. Pedro was doing an ASCD seminar last week, and we can clarify that as well.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Now, we'll go into our proposed action items. Mr. Rikis?
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the personnel appointments, leaves, and separations, August 2016 Board of Education and Finance Committee meeting minutes, April 2016 Policy Committee meeting minutes, recommended policy amendments, destruction of July 2014 closed session, audio recording July 2016 School Treasurers Report list of bills, budget amendments, special purpose treasurers bond, application for recognition of schools, and gift acceptance for Dewey and Walker.
I second.
Ms. Portrapi?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Rikis?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Motion carries. How many are four to zero? Thank you. Our next item is the adoption of the 2016-17 District 65 and Joint Agreement final budgets. We'll state the motion, and then we can go into any final presentation questions. Is that okay?
Yeah. I move that the Board of Education adopt the final 2016-17 budgets, including aggregate expenses for the operation of Park School as presented.
Okay.
Second.
So before we vote, was there a presentation, Mary? Turn it over to Mary.
We have a very brief presentation. Earlier tonight, there was a public hearing on the tentative budget, which is a legal requirement. In a few moments, the board will vote on the final budget, which is also balanced. T tentative budget had a surplus of $79,000, approximately $79,000. The final budget is also balanced with approximately $73,000 surplus. Expenditures and revenues are projected to increase by approximately 2%, with property taxes increasing by only 0.8%, which is a 2014 Consumer Price Index. The budget is balanced because of the short-term fixes, prepayments, budget reductions, non-personnel budget cuts. We reduce approximately $600,000. Last year, we reduced approximately $900,000. The majority of the costs remain estimated in the final budget because of the ongoing employee negotiations. Although fiscal year '17 budget is balanced, we are projecting very large deficits for fiscal year '18 and beyond, which are depicted on this slide, and our very small fund balance, approximately 20%, is not helpful. We are in the bottom quartile of the state, so as you can see, it will be very hard for the district to absorb these deficits. Even without technology shift and changes at the legislative changes which are proposed right now in Springfield, we are projecting to have a deficit of $4.6 million next year, $7.1 million in fiscal year '19, approximately $6.7 million in fiscal year '20, and over $10 million in fiscal year '21. If you factor in technology expenditures, which have been financed with bond proceeds of 1.9, our deficits are growing exponentially. And then if we factor in pension cost shift, which is very likely to happen in fiscal year '18, and then other financial threats, and that's basically Senate Bill 231, which would change the state aid formula, and Evanston 65 would not be a winner if this bill passes. And House Bill 696, which is basically tax-free, I mean, these deficits could grow up to $26 million in fiscal year '21. So in the nutshell, that's the situation that we are projecting. Fiscal year '18 will probably won't change very much because the CPI, Consumer Price Index, is known. The cost of staffing will probably change slightly after the contracts are ratified. Again, the cost of staffing is estimated, but we do not anticipate drastic changes. Thank you.
And just to reiterate on the chart that Kathy is presenting, it's in the line three that we should be paying the closest attention, that we're balanced for this fiscal year, but as we project into next school year and beyond, those first three, those first four lines, four component parts that are red, 4.5, 7.1, 6.7, and 10.7 million are what we project to be the deficits at the district level.
Correct. So can I open up to any questions? I know we've heard the presentations previously, but any remaining questions that we have relative to the budget?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Claudia?
Thank you, guys, for continuing to present this and making it clear and understandable and stating our position so that there can't be any doubt of where we stand and where we might stand in the future should certain things happen. So I just really want to thank you so much for helping me understand all of this. One question I had, because I've never been through this process before when we were in negotiations, so given that, is it 84% of our budget?
Approximately, yes.
Approximately is salaries and benefits. And we don't have a contract yet with our employee groups. What do we do when we finally do have one? Do we go back in and adjust the budget?
Yes, so what we have in the budget is the, we have estimated increases parked there. So once we ratify, because that's exactly what happened four years ago, we settled after the budget was adopted, we go back and we do budget amendments. I do budget amendments, and basically, I put the money in individual salary lines, and so, I mean, we are covered. I mean, it's not like we do not have it. We do have it.
Okay.
Bottom line.
And then, I think my other question really is for you, Paul, which is that, as I was reading through the whole presentation and the different scenarios and the alignment of the budget with our strategic priorities, it seemed to me that there was a tension, if not an outright conflict sometimes, between some of our priorities and what we had in the budget. Like, if we were to spend, actually spend what we need to spend on, let's say, curricular materials, given all the new things that we're introducing, we would be in deficit. So are you asking us as a board to make a choice between balanced budget or, let's say, curricular improvements? Is that the choice we really have or not?
Right now, I'm asking you to make a choice on balanced budget under constraints, and so we can only go so far in terms of meeting our obligations to staff and to our contracts, and we can only go so far in terms of the many issues and concerns that we have in the budget. It does mean that we'll be restricted in terms of how much we can invest as we move forward, and that's something that, again, I think you're right, is a tension. It's a tension on if we're going to make significant progress for all students, and if we're going to make significant progress for those students who are striving students, who we may need to even have more investment on. That ability to invest right now is limited, and so we've done the best we can across all of our departments in the district to be able to prioritize, but that will, so for this year, we're comfortable where we're at. As we face what potentially could be a $4.5 million deficit next year, that becomes even a greater tension.
Okay, so the things, it's like a whole section of what will happen if we can't, we don't have this money, and what will be affected? And what you're saying is nothing will be affected this year with the budget, this year, but starting next year?
As we're operating--
Those serious consequences are going to come into play?
Significant ones, and whether that's material, whether that's--
Whether it's materials or technology or--
Or class size or other features that actually dictate where we spend our money. We're going to have to be able to spend our money in different ways to meet a balanced budget. We want, we have to have a balanced budget. And another question that you're not asking, but I'm going to ask and answer, is why not use the fund balance? Isn't that what a fund balance is for?
I thought I knew the answer.
But the fund balance, as Kathy has presented and Kathy and Mary have presented many times over, proper financial management in the state of Illinois or across entities across the country, we should have 25% of our budget, of our operating budget, in a fund balance fund. If we have less than 25%, then when we go out to borrow money, we will have borrowing rates that are at higher rates than what we would normally spend, which would then be increased expenditures for the district. And so, and right now, I don't remember the classification that we're in in terms of our financial--
Double A2.
We're double A2 in terms of our bond rating, and then the state of Illinois classification is we're in the lowest quartile of--
Yeah, in the 15%. That's what it was.
So we were, the district has been historically on a watch list, and then we're in the lowest 15% in terms of our finances. So using that fund balance is a dangerous thing to do in terms of our financial standing.
But the, I'm trying to find what you called it, because it was sort of like Budget Reductions and Efficiencies, which was on page 137. That was where we said we might reduce curriculum supplies. That's for this year?
That's for this year.
That's for this year.
Okay, that is for this year? All right. So we reduce those curriculum supplies, just, let's just take the math and literacy, the new math and literacy frameworks that we're going to be training people on and we're introducing this year. Is this budget going to compromise being able to do that if we're cutting curricular supplies in half?
We've already made the plans to cut the supplies in half for this year, so we're, are we where we should be? Not necessarily, but can we manage this year? Yes. Can we manage next year with regard to what you're asking? No.
Okay, so the whole section in our, sort of our strategic priorities, we are a little bit worried about being able to meet those priorities for this year.
Correct. I mean, we feel as though we can stay the course with this budget and meet our priorities to the best of our abilities, but we're really, we're pushing up against a wall just because of the limited resources we have, and again, we want to have this balanced. I mean, it's balanced with only $73,000 left.
Right.
And if I could add to the answer, I know we purchased some of the materials with the last year's supply, surplus, because we had a surplus and we were preparing, there was one of the expenditures, so we were able to reduce.
Okay. All right, well, it's just nice to know where we are.
Thank you for the question. Excellent one. Any, anyone else? Okay, so then I think we can move on to the vote for adoption. Go ahead, sorry. Ms. Portrapi?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Rikis?
Yes.
Ms. Chow? Yes. The motion passes four to zero. And now, we have, I think, one major discussion item and discussion and approval, which is the school board, the meeting calendar, our planning calendar for 2016-17. Tracy, could you put--
I move that the Board approve the 2016-17 School Board meeting planning calendar as amended.
Second.
All right, let's, do you want to open this up?
Yeah, and I'm going to turn it over to Maria Allison, and what we're going to do tonight, because several of our colleagues are at the Equity Conference, we will absolutely entertain questions, and if we don't have the answers tonight, we will be able to get back to you on this.
So just a couple comments as we preface this. You have the second installment of the giant board planning calendar in front of you, which was a new format last year, and I just want to restate that there are a few goals that we had when we set out to create the board planning calendar this way. One was to ensure that our conversations here together with the board are tied as closely as possible to our top strategic priorities. Another is to align the timing of the board agenda items to the pacing of our work plans and to key decision deadlines that we have over the course of the year. And a third is to provide the high-level view of the district's ongoing concurrent work as we take each item as it comes over the course of the year, so we know what else is going on at the same time. The calendar topics were sourced from a few places. The main one would be our strategic plan work plans, and these work plans are the result of a lot of careful discussion and planning by department leads and their teams. They represent how we plan to advance the strategic plan in year two of implementation. Other big initiatives and operational functions that are happening, the items in the right-hand column on these milestone pages may not be explicitly called for in the strategic plan, but they are critical to district operations and support the overall vision. And also, topics came from previous board topics or board requests, so these are either things that are required by policy to be discussed in this context or discussed and approved by the board, or topics that the board specifically requested updates on. Just a couple of things worth noting, we have quarterly updates listed as board agenda items. We're going to continue to bring those quarterly updates on the STRAP Plan. Those will cover these strategic plan milestones that are listed in the left-hand column. So while there may be a milestone of interest that doesn't have its own dedicated board meeting topic, they will all be covered as we bring the quarterly updates, so that's another opportunity to have touchpoints on all this body of work in the STRAP Plan. And lastly, I would just say that, you know, setting this out a year at a time in advance, we try really hard to strike that balance between being ambitious and being realistic in planning this. And that said, we hope it'll continue to be a living document that we can return to, because we all know that things may look differently in quarter four. When quarter four rolls around, then we thought they would look in quarter four, so hopefully, by bringing those quarterly updates, our hope is that we can course correct as needed and not let anything fall off the radar, even if adjustments have to be made due to emerging priorities. So that's sort of the logic of the layout and the work for that, and then, as Dr. Goran mentioned, since we're a little light on people over here tonight, we can field questions and return those to you at the next meeting.
And before we do open up the question, I just wanted to, I thought once again, as I went through this, and especially as we get questions from the community in terms of, you know, you've got this strategic plan, what's actually happening? Or, you know, how are we translating this plan into action so that it's not just a document? I know this is another document, but this is an excellent way for not only us, but everyone who cares about the strategic plan to think about what is actually, how does
And lastly, I would just say that, you know, setting this out a year at a time in advance, we try really hard to strike that balance between being ambitious and being realistic in planning this. And that said, we hope it'll continue to be a living document that we can return to, because we all know that things may look differently in quarter four. When quarter four rolls around, then we thought they would look in quarter four. So hopefully, by bringing those quarterly updates, our hope is that we can course correct as needed and not let anything fall off the radar, even if adjustments have to be made due to emerging priorities. So that's sort of the, the logic of the layout and the work for that. And then, as Dr. Goran mentioned, since we're a little light on people over here tonight, we can field questions and return those to you at the next meeting.
And before we do open up the question, I just wanted to, I thought once again, as I went through this, and especially as we get questions from the community in terms of, you know, you've got this strategic plan, what's actually happening? Or, you know, how do, how are we translating this plan into action so that it's not just a document? I know this is another document, but this is an excellent way for not only us, but everyone who, who cares about the strategic plan to think about what is actually, how does this work break down? And so I, I guess I would encourage, I know it's really, you know, we started it for our planning purposes, but I thought about it as a way to also help communicate when we talk about, you know, our work around culturally responsive instruction, or culturally relevant instruction. What does that actually mean? What we can see in here? What are the, what are the actions that are being taken in a given quarter? So it's really extremely helpful, and I appreciate the, the team bringing this level of rigor to our process. So thank you.
That was going to be my first comment, too, that so many organizations invest like we did in seeking stakeholder input from all the, what we have, more than 2,000 people participate somehow in providing input into the strategic plan. And often, those strategic plans sound nice and don't go anywhere. Or even as we had in the district in our last strategic plan, things were tackled sort of as a one-and-done, meaning if it got done, it was focused on for six to 12 months, and then we went on to the next thing. And teachers had concerns because they didn't feel like there was enough time to adapt and adjust, and parents had concerns because there were so many things. And it's not that there's not a lot of change here, but a lot of things are staggered over time, especially if there are things that are relevant to teaching and learning, some of those changes. And I just think it's, it's very thoughtful, it's intentional, and it's helping, it's really our way of telling the community and all of our stakeholders, we heard you, and we're continuing to prioritize all of the activities that we agreed to. So I, I think that's, it's really unusual, I think, that an organization can apply this level of rigor in. So thank you for leading us in that effort.
So, questions? I have questions. Once you lay out such specifics, of course, you can't help but delve into them and have comments about it. So it's wonderful that it's here, and I can't help but have a few questions about the timing of some of the implementation. But more broadly, on the, are we going to the calendar? Are we staying with the?
I think-
Do we stay here first?
Why don't, yeah, why don't we cover off if there are questions on the way the, the milestones are laid out first, and then we'll go to the adjacent count, our calendar.
Yeah. The only thing that jumps out at me is, is the idea that we're waiting until quarter four for our implementation of a revised middle school reading intervention course, and to expand our intervention tools that are available to schools, just because that was flagged so early in the year last year, and we are sort of waiting for this buttressing of the middle school reading interventions. And I'm wondering why, I know we have to lay the groundwork, and of course, there's looking at best practices, but it seems like we're, we're, wait till the end of the year seems odd to me.
So that's a really good question, and thank you for using that as an example. I don't want to speak exactly to the work plan for that one, but something I should have mentioned is that the quarters that the milestones land on are the quarters where the work will be at a place to report out publicly on what's happened. It doesn't mean the work will only occur during that quarter.
Okay, that's good.
So many of the work streams will be enduring work streams for quarters preceding, but the quarter that it's listed on here is when it's going to have gotten to a point where it makes sense to do the, here's the status, here's, here's where it is. Again, without going into specifics on the timeline for that one you asked about, which I think would be better a John and Stacy question, just to clarify that in general.
That would be a great thing, if they could bring back some clarification for that. And along those same lines, it's a question I asked earlier, and it's on the next page before, on the January through March, and it's every child below the 25th percentile will have an RTI plan. And I asked before, given the fact that what we're shooting for is to get those kids below the 40th percentile by eighth grade, up beyond that, so they can be in, you know, they're not flagged as needing extra help in high school, how many students were missing between the 25th and the 40th, and why we're not expanding it to the 40th? So I, I would love to have the information on that, because it seems like we should align those, those priorities or those goals together, the kids that we have ready for high school without supports, and why we, we call it the 25th percentile, MECS is saying the 40th. So we had talked about that before. Is that just money? Is that how many students is that? I'd love to hear about that.
Well, it's also, so we'll follow through on that.
Okay.
And, and yet, part of our goals is to really decrease the percentage of kids who are below the 25th percentile.
Yeah.
And we actually made the beginnings of progress on that, and so that's a good first step. And so I think that's where our focus is. And to make sure, and to ensure, I think a year ago, when we reported out on these data, and, and, when we reported out on the children who are not accomplishing what we want them to accomplish, we, we made this as a commitment, so, but we can get back.
And yet, we committed on the other side to ETHS to working together for these 100 students that we'd identified at the 40th. So we are getting sort of mixed messages there. We are giving you mixed messages, so that's why it would be nice to know why we couldn't merge them. If we could, it would make sense to align those goals, in my mind.
And the other piece of that is our strategic plan outcomes are related to the 25th percentile.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
Should we, I mean, should-
Should we be looking at a different number, or should we?
We would have to revisit-
Yeah, exactly.
That in general.
I understand.
So it's, you know, definitely a discussion that we need to understand what the implications of that would be.
So those are my two questions. Okay. Thank you.
Couple?
Yes.
One is on, since you said that the quarter that it's listed in is when you're going to report out on it, if we look at the third quarter, there are three things that say begin, or two things that say begin that kind of make me nervous, because I think we've actually already begun them. One is begin district-wide equity walks. We've started those, right? I mean, elsewhere, we've started those. Begin to, begin to develop a district equity policy. I think we've made a commitment that we're starting.
Right, well, we've already-
We have a statement, but not a policy.
All right, but I, but we're not waiting until quarter three to begin to develop one, right?
We're, I think in the, so we'll come back, and we can, we can tweak these, the language here. We're in the process of defining what an equity policy would be. It's going to be informed by the equity walks and by other opportunities to learn from other districts what their equity policies are.
I would think that's all beginning to develop one, what you say you're doing right now.
Right, so that could be aware.
I mean, you are in the beginning of development.
We can-
And then the other thing that I was concerned about was principal evaluation appears in, again, in quarter three, but that's when it has to be, and it's also in quarter two. So, but that's something that we, those observations, we have to have completed by.
Correct, correct.
Perhaps putting completion date would be a good idea. And one final thing, three schools, sorry?
I was just going to say, I think that that's on the operational side.
Sorry. I saw that I crossed, I crossed the line. I'm sorry about that.
No, 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 it's okay.
But it, but it's important to cross the line, because everything that we're doing in terms of trying to achieve the milestones, we also have the, the work of the district, and it's, it's a combination of both. And that's why we put them together.
It gets a little confusing. And then there's three new schools implementing restorative practices. That's also in quarter three, in circles. And that says throughout the year. So I would think that we're already doing that.
Yep.
So I think this is fantastic, and, and I, I appreciate, you know, all the work that went into it, but as with most things, you know, there's little tweaks, I think, that-
Yeah, and I think the same logic applies, for example, for the restorative practice, that that'll be a point where it's up and running enough to, to report.
To report.
A lot of these work streams are things that, honestly, work is going to happen on them across the whole year. So part of pacing out the, report out of the milestones is so that we don't come in every quarter and say, we're still doing the stuff we were doing last quarter, we're, we're doing some more of it, but that we kind of spread the milestones out and report when something has kind of come to completion or gotten fully up and running, or things like that. But we can ask Joyce to provide some clarification on where she thinks things will be by that quarter, or why it was assigned to that quarter.
Yeah.
Let me underscore one thing that Maria is saying, too, about work streams or work plans. So these are the plans of the senior managers and the directors of departments that, that then we hold, or I hold people accountable for in terms of the work that we're doing. And we're, again, in a, in an organization that is stressing continuous improvement, there are going to be times when we're making fantastic progress, and sometimes when we're going to hit bumps along the way, and we can at least be honest and transparent about that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone?
I do have a couple.
Sure.
Excuse me. And we're just sticking to the topics, or excuse me, not the board topic agenda, or calendar.
The quarterly calendar.
Great, great. So, three topics. One is early childhood, which I know when we talked at some point at a board meeting a few months ago, the board said it was an area that we really wanted to focus on. I know it was an area of focus, especially coming out of the report on African-American achievement, because that was an area where, if you looked at some early childhood data, it showed some real opportunity to close the gap. I see in October through December, we have it in operations. I'm just wondering, it feels like we need a more strategic conversation about what we're going to be doing as a district with early childhood. And maybe that's in here somewhere else under another topic. I know it wasn't explicit in the strategic plan, so I can understand why it might not have been called out, but I think it was the one topic that the board said, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, that we wanted to elevate attention on.
Yeah, so I would say the places that's covered, I'm crossing over to the calendar now.
Yeah.
Which we weren't going to do, but the December 19th board meeting has a discussion item in there that is meant to be an early childhood programming update. So that's the sort of dedicated board meeting time for that. And then there are numerous early childhood-related milestones happening throughout, and so another place where those discussions would happen would be when the quarterly updates come in and update on the progress in those areas, so.
Okay, that's great.
Could I help?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I missed that as a topic under the board one. Under the arts curriculum review, I think we need to be explicit about what is and is not going to be covered.
Which quarter is that?
I don't remember which quarter that's in. Do you remember, Maria? It's in here somewhere. Well, it should be under teaching and learning, right?
Yeah, it should be red.
Should be red, so that-
I don't have them all memorized.
I mean, if it's reporting out, that probably wouldn't be until the end of the year, right?
Probably.
And that's, it's, it's in here, isn't it, Maria? Somewhere.
It is in here.
Okay, so now that we agree it's in here somewhere, I just think we need to be explicit about what's being covered. And I just want to highlight, you know, industrial arts, which many people may not always think about when they think about the arts. When the board voted to continue that program for this school year, it was under the assumption that that program would be reviewed, so we could make a long-term decision about that. And I just want to make sure that we're not missing that, since it's not called out. So I think it's important to be explicit about that.
Right now, and we'll have to wait for Stacy to be able to respond to that. Right now, the arts curriculum review, I believe, is the current arts programming. And it's a, it's a smaller review rather than a larger review, but we'll, we'll clarify.
We have in, in the second quarter, launch a curriculum review cycle around science, library, and art.
Oh.
Yep.
Right, so that's, that's launching.
I just, I get, Stacy may need to clarify, but the board made the decision based on the fact that we were going to be doing that assessment. So I'm not sure what they're, what she may need to clarify. And I get if you want, if she needs to be here to have a conversation about it, but that was what the agreement was back in June.
Well, if, based on, you know, scope of work and priorities, there's a different recommendation, and she'll have to come back to the-
She'll have to come back, right.
The team will have to come back to the-
Right.
The board with that.
Yeah, that would be new information, then.
Yep.
And the last is just dates regarding potential referendum, and how those will fit into, you know, the strategic plan milestones, operations, and board topics. You know, there may be potential votes. I think it's certainly worth being explicit about that in the finance committee meetings for, you know, October, November, December, whichever dates, because we know this will be a topic we're talking about.
And on that potentiality, we will come back to the next finance committee meeting with a, a set of suggested timelines and dates for what, what would have to happen in order to consider a referendum. I also think this goes back to Claudia's earlier question regarding the budget. That then becomes an interesting question for me and for us around trade-offs in terms of work, that as we actually engage in the type of work that has to be done to consider a referendum or other ways of thinking about our, our budgeting, we may have to trade off with some of the other work streams that we have, and that will, that's what Maria was talking about earlier, in terms of this being an live document, that, that if we're going to spend and invest a lot of time in, in one area, we may have to move one of the milestones to other, other time periods, or to a new year, actually, depending on what that is. So yes, we will come back on, on that. That's a good suggestion, and we'll be poised to do so at the next finance committee. And I'll reserve the right to be able to do some trade-offs for what we can invest our staff time in and what we can't.
That's all I had.
Thank you. Let's move to the, then actual board meeting topics. And given some of this discussion, I may, you know, have additional comments on that, but are there, who has specific items that-
I have just one simple one. I think Tracy has, may have some, too, but the, a deal of when is the board reorganization meeting? Because right now, I see April 24th. Is that right, that it's the seating of the board in April? It just seems earlier than normal.
Um, I don't know.
It's usually the, May.
Previously, we've done it in May.
First day of meeting, but when calculating the dates, that's the closer to the three weeks required to seat the board now.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Just wanted to confirm that.
Tracy? I don't, I'm not questioning the, the topics as much as the timing, and I think it'll have, you'll probably have to relook at it once you fill in some of the finance meetings, but some of these meetings seem like they've got tremendous, if we want to do any justice to any of these topics, I don't see how we could possibly cover Hispanic student achievement, math update, algebra for all, and OCTAN planning, all of these really needy. And it happened, I mean, I, so I would think that we need to do some shifting.
Some need to move into working.
Yeah, because, I mean, the idea, you know, there are a lot of these that I'm, I'm thinking just seem, unless we just are going to do a very superficial look at it, to do the PARC results, the five essentials, the PD plans, summer learning, TWE, pilots.
And that meeting in January 23rd.
That was November 14th. That has, I mean, that's just, we spent whole, whole board meetings on the five essentials, and then you put in PD, PARC, summer learning, TWE, and enrollment, staffing projections, and the state score. I mean, those, I don't know, I, I don't know what the approach will be to those topics, unless we really aren't going to, we should designate one or two discussion items, but we certainly couldn't discuss all of those with any-
I think the idea of moving some to the working board meetings with finance makes sense.
And I was thinking of that same thing, you called out the 14th, like April, the April 24th meeting also, I mean, there are a number of these that seem-
A number of them.
January 23rd.
That, and the finance meeting is called a finance meeting, but it is also the working board meeting.
Yeah.
So that we do have that option. Now, maybe there's a, you know, the strategic reason why you chose not to populate the finance meeting with those topics, so we should talk about that.
That's what I was saying, probably will require looking at the finance again.
Schedule that we're going to look in, in October. So we'll have to revisit, you know, what can be, back to your point, what can we give good attention to and diligence towards, you know, to cover in a single night.
I, I also think that if we know that there's going to be something that we might- I also think that if we know that there's going to be something that we might, in advance, we know that there, we want to hear what's going on and that there might be some changes in direction that the board members would want or whatever, that we keep that in mind too, that the topics be addressed early enough in the year. You know, it's like when we've talked about raising fees or changing bus routes or other things, we say, well, it's too late in the year this year, so we're going to have to make that change next year. And we've got to make sure that things are on our agenda in a timely fashion, which you wouldn't know necessarily.
Well, I think, it seemed to me that, in looking at it, I mean, I tried to scan for that. And it's a really good job of getting earlier on even with the fees and the, because the transportation is another one, recommended changes for '17, '18. It's early.
I think we did try to back map from major deadlines when we knew them.
When you knew them. That's what I was saying, is that you might not have known them.
Yeah, and to do the one-two of bringing it to finance, bringing it to board, to make sure we've got it coming both times on that. But, yeah, as you can see, I mean, there are a few jam-packed agendas, using the working sessions for overflow and figuring out which topics make sense to shift into that venue. I think it's something that we'll have to probably navigate on an ongoing basis, because it may make more sense to elevate some and shift others, and that may emerge. But I think that part of seeing it at a glance all laid out here is, you can see the complexity of trying to get it all in, right? There's just, there's a lot. And so I think it's, we're going to have to probably navigate some of that prioritization together.
The complexity is underscored because we want to use the finance slash working board meetings as an opportunity, when we can, for a first read, to get comments and concerns so that we can then come back. So we're not bringing something forward one evening for your approval without some consideration. So that's one of the pieces. And then the second one, Richard, it goes back to what you just suggested, that as we factor in potential opportunities to consider a referendum, that's also going to make those finance committee meetings really important for, finance slash working board meetings really important for the board to consider the options that we have. And we may have to tweak the calendar, just given some deadlines on when we would have to go forward on a referendum consideration to be able to do all that.
Well, there's another option as I look at the fall, which isn't ideal, but we could look at adding a meeting on October 17th, or policy is on November 21st. Since the 14th of November seems to be the first really heavy meeting with discussion items, if we made the 21st a board meeting and moved policy, it wouldn't cause the administration to get the information ready sooner, and it would allow us to go more in-depth on the 21st for some, I think we have, what, six, five discussion topics on the 14th? That might be ideal.
So let us go back and look at that.
Split those topics in half.
It does depend a little bit on who the primary author is and whether or not they're, we'll have to figure that out. But, yeah, that's.
I think it's a good option to consider.
It would be, they would be able to go later. We probably should consult with SUNY on that just to make sure, because of the work of the policy meetings, and she has a fairly, I think, aggressive agenda this year, too. I mean, doesn't mean that's not going to happen, it just means it might give.
I mean, it could be moved to the 16th or something.
Yeah, yes, right. But that's a, that's a good idea that we may have to consider additional meeting or I had one question about, on the May 22nd board meeting, there's an action item for recommended policy changes. Does that just mean, meant to mean general, in general, those that are coming out of the previous policy committee meeting?
Right.
Okay. Not a specific set that we're looking at?
Are there usually some that come, isn't there a point in the year where we receive a set of recommended changes to school policies?
They come.
And does it, I feel like we get.
Each time.
They come after every policy meeting, they're embedded in.
Not ours, but ones that come.
You're like the press plus stuff.
Press stuff comes each time.
Each time.
Okay.
At each meeting. That's why I wondered.
I didn't know if there was like more in the spring or something.
Oh, I don't know.
That's all.
That's why I asked, because this was only put on one of, on one of them. So I figured maybe it was a bigger set, or that's when we anticipated having a couple of the policies that SUNY had discussed at the previous meeting. So we'll look at potentially moving to working board items that we can as overflow and then as we're incorporating the other financial components.
And again, if there is the, if we move forward in considering a referendum, we may need an extra meeting or two to be able to consider all the, to consider what we have to consider to move forward. Consider all the considerations.
Duly noted. So we have a number of questions coming out. I guess that this is an approval item?
No.
It's not, it's just discussion. Because it said discussion and approval.
Oh, it does. Oh, but, oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
As amended.
We don't usually have discussion and approval.
Same time. So I guess the question is whether.
Technically, I don't know, are we allowed to vote on it if it hasn't been a previous agenda item?
It's not been our custom.
I think, doesn't have to be shown once.
It feels like we could do another, I mean, it feels a little incomplete in terms of the shifting. Although if it, does it, when does it need to be accepted, or is there a deadline for that?
I believe that it needs to be accepted soon.
Okay.
Moving forward.
All right.
Would that be tonight soon, or would that be, we have one more meeting soon?
Is it something we could do on October 10th?
But what has to be accepted? The board.
Isn't this just for our purposes?
For our purposes, because the formal agendas of the Board of Education have to be posted a week ahead of time. And so what we.
This is just a planning thing for our purpose. It's not like the calendar, correct?
And it's not, and it is flexible. It's a plan that.
Right. Yeah. So I think we can, we can, if we, we're going to go forward with the spirit of what's on the calendar.
Right, of course.
For the next couple of meetings, we will change the planning calendar as appropriate and also add in the things that we have to add in. And then we can come back for what would be a formal approval the next time when we crank things around.
Then we will surpass the October 10th finance meeting if we're going to talk about some of those dates. So that could be incorporated if we come back to the.
Correct.
Although the next board meeting is the joint board meeting.
Right.
So, but we can do an action.
We can make an action at that joint board meeting.
Okay. Okay, so let's do that. Is that okay with you all?
I think it's fine.
Okay.
I mean, because again, the most important thing is that we post our board agenda a week ahead of time.
Right.
Forty-eight hours ahead of time. And so we're posting our board agenda here six months ahead of time in many cases, which is part of what we want to do to make sure people understand where we're moving. But we can be very flexible in that.
Okay. So this is our working document for now. And will always be a working document, but we'll make some tweaks to it and do the approval of the working document at our next board meeting. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
So I think our final couple items, upcoming work, we have a number of meetings. And if anyone wants to make comment on the finance committee meeting, working board, anything, Richard, you want to call out? No?
Everyone should be paying attention.
Yes.
Every meeting.
Every finance committee meeting.
We have our joint and district board meeting on the 24th. And we do have, actually, oh, the committee meeting next week, is that right? It's October 6th for the 65202 committee. Is anybody, Cradle to Career, is there any committee report?
We've had some good meetings for our team, and we're planning a summit for kindergarten and preschool for early childhood educators to come together in February, I think, is our latest action. It's just really exciting, really good work's being done.
I think it's, would be important, I was just noticing that, you know, we give Cradle to Career $50,000 a year. And I think it would be a good idea to develop an understanding of what the benefit back to us in specific is for that. Again, because we're making hard financial decisions, I think it's really important to talk about all those expenditures we make. I'm not saying that, you know, how it would come out, but we must have some expectation of what we're going to get. And you say that there's good work going on, so.
There is. I agree, it's a little under the radar because it's diffuse. And it's important to bring it together for the community and for us. So you're right about that. And I don't know what the best vehicle to have someone come and make a presentation on the overall agenda and what's been accomplished. So I agree. Great.
Great old career.
We can put that on.
Put that on, let's get it on.
We're going to be here all.
Those meetings that's.
Put that somewhere.
It's also, you know, the board members coming to the committee meetings is also really eye-opening about all the really great work that's doing, going on. So if you'd like to come, that's another way to really feel educated about it, because sometimes the overview's missed the details.
Well, it would then be useful to have a list of when those committee meetings occur.
Yeah.
Cradle to Career just, is just announced, we're going to convene leaders of the organization, so the, in this case, the superintendent and the board chair, on a conversation about equity and what each of the institutions that are partners in Cradle to Career are doing on equity. And so we just signed up for a November, mid-November evening meeting with all of the partners of Cradle to Career to be, and we'll learn from our colleagues across town what's going on.
You know what might be useful, Claudia, is for us to get a list of, there's also quarterly advisor, is it, whatever, the quarterly partners meeting?
Yep.
That might be a good venue. It isn't at the committee level, but kind of brings up the committee work and what's happened in the previous quarter to give you a little bird's eye view. So we can get that scheduled.
Yeah, I'm not saying we shouldn't be involved. I just want to be more accountable with what we're spending, given that.
Understood.
Fair.
It's half of what we just cut in curricular.
And the idea is the collective impact of everybody contributing that will, you know, pay dividends.
Amplify.
Yes. Community Schools Initiative. I don't know, we, if there's anything new to report, there was a hire of.
We've got new community school managers in place at SHOOT and King Arts, and they're getting things off to a start in their school communities. So that's pretty much update for now.
There's an update in the packet for Head Start Early Childhood, the joint committee. Have you guys worked out an agenda at all?
I saw, I mean, I think it's the joint literacy and the joint achievement and the metrics for the literacy. So, I mean, it has stayed rather constant, but we can tweak it and make sure we have everything on it.
Okay. I just, I made a note on the joint meeting, maybe we should have common, our common outcomes, because that seems to be part of the discussion now, what are the comments?
Measurements?
Yeah.
Yeah, that absolutely should be there.
Park School Advisory?
We have a meeting on the schedule. It was difficult to get, but it's there.
And then our next meeting's the 21st of November on policy. Any other committees we've missed? Hearing none? Okay. Informal presentations from the public. Does anyone like to present, public? No? All right.
Ma'am, if you'd like to come up and present, you can come to the podium and just state your name and your address, as you had said. And then we have three minutes.
My name is Rita Mardel Pope. I live at 1513 Mid-Daniel. I have some real severe things going on with District 65 because of a comm link that is connected to electronic criminal surveillance. It is posted on the house. It interfered with my sole proprietorship as a daycare provider for over 17 years. I will be having my attorneys contact you concerning it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't think there's, are there any questions about the FYIs? Maybe?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, oh my goodness, I'm very excited to say that we can adjourn this meeting at the time of 8:24. Close enough?
Yep.
I can't see it so well.
Yep.
We'll look forward to seeing you on the 10th.